We'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join us for the pledges and the prayer?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. On our the seat of God, I pledge me the essence of Texas, one state, under God, one indivis-
Councilmember Stewart, would you please pray for us tonight?
Ma'am, pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the day that you've given us, Lord. We just thank you for the weather that you've sent our way. Uh, Lord, we just ask for some more moisture. We should, we could sure use it. Uh, Lord, we just ask you with our first responders as they go about our town, uh, protecting us day and night, they're, they're, uh, unrelentless. They're always out there and we do appreciate them. And we just ask that you bless them and keep them safe and keep them from all harm. Or we just ask you with us as we make the decisions that will affect our city. Or there's some waiting things that we're, we're considering and Lord, we just, we want your guidance on it. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our town. Or we just ask that you bless Levelland with all that, that we need. All these things we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any statements? Thought I saw. I'm gonna grab on, Anne. We have one statement about citizens. Um, Pete, would you please join us?
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Pete Cunningham. I live at two, two, two Brentwood Drive here in Levelland, Texas. I've been a long residence here for quite some time and I'm really concerned about two issues. One, our city credit score. Uh, there's gonna be a major impact regarding to our city's credit score if we continue to spend the way we're spending right now. Recently, we spent millions of dollars regarding to the, uh, upgrade of our waste management. And that has been an ongoing project. And the bid was put in and was granted to a contractor. I don't know what your clause is in your contract, but my concern is when a company such as them, and I've been in business myself, if I have a contract, there should be a clause in the contract. Uh, if that clause is not there, then we're just spending money left and right. And I'm really concerned about the additional funds that we're gonna have to be putting out on this project. And approximately around seven to eight, maybe 10 million dollars. I don't know. The other thing is the animal control. Uh, in the years past, there's been a lot of people standing before you regarding the animal control center that it always needed upgrades. I understand that y'all are gonna be considering something to that effect later on tonight. Uh, I don't know why this wasn't passed back then, but again, that's another spending. So you're looking at about between 14 to 20 million hypothetically speaking. Uh, I don't know the exact numbers, but that's just overspending. And I'm really concerned that it's gonna hurt this city down the road in the future if we continue to spend the way we're spending right now. I thank you for your, your time and consideration and y'all have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
We have no more statements by citizens. We'll move on to item number one. To consider all matters incident related to the issuance of sale of City of Levelland, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer System Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2025A, including the adoption of ordinance 1096 authoring the issuance of such certificates of obligation.
All right, Mayor, Council, good evening. Jason Hughes with Hilltop Securities. Good to be with you again tonight. And what Mr. Fisher is handing out is a summary of the two certificate of obligation sales that we undertook this morning. Let me kind of take you back a little bit. If you remember on June 2nd, at that point, that's when council approved the notice of intent, which was the first step to issue the COs. And that notice of intent, the maximum amount that was authorized was just over 11.4 million dollars. And we're actually well below that, uh, which is good. From a credit rating perspective, one of the things that we do anytime that we go out and we sell open market debt is we go to standard importers to get a credit rating. And what they do is they ascertain that rating based off your, your finances, your general economy, your debt load, and then your management. And so you score very highly there and you got an A plus. So that was an affirmation of your current rating. Uh, so very happy with that. And then the other thing, just like we did on the past CO issuance, is we actually applied for insurance. And so that carries a higher credit rating. As that credit rating goes up, the interest rate goes down. So again, very happy with that. So the first, uh, one that we sold was the tax exempt, the 2025A. Uh, final par amount that we're asking for your approval is about $3,030,000. And that produces $3 million in project proceeds to the city. That final true interest cost was 4.45%. And so you can see down that first kind of rectangular box, what I had been estimating was about 5.1%. Uh, just trying to be conservative and especially in that interest rate environment at the time. So we're about two thirds of a 1% less. Uh, so again, very happy with that. As you can see there, what that directly means is we have a little under $400,000 less in debt service. And then from an annual basis, it's almost $20,000 less than what was projected. So again, very happy with that. The second one that we sold was for the sewer treatment plant. Those were taxable certificates of obligation. So we produced $7 million in project proceeds. What we're asking for your approval of is 7,165,000. So that included the project proceeds plus all of the cost of issuance on that taxable 2025B. So there, since it is taxable, a higher interest rate of 5.48%. But again, as you can see there down below, uh, I had been estimating about 6.6%. So we came in a full 1.1% less. And what that translates into is 1.3 million dollars less in debt service and $65,000 less on an annual basis. So again, very strong pricing that we received or that the city received today. You see there, one of the things that I kind of skipped over, these are callable on August 15th, 2035. And all that simply means is you, the city, retain the flexibility and the right to take those certificates of obligation away from the current investors at that time. And so you could either refinance it, much like you'd refinance your home mortgage if it's a lower interest rate, or if you had some extra funds available, you could pay it off outright. But that's all that you're choosing. It's solely at your choosing. So that's the call date, again, August 15th, 2035. So if you turn with me to the next page, it says sources and uses of funds. Uh, so you can see there again, 3,030,000 is what we're, uh, or what I'm asking for your approval on the 25As, 7,165,000 on the taxable 25Bs. Again, all of the cost of issuance associated with these are contained, if you will, within the certificates of obligation. Said another way, you didn't have any funds come out of your general fund, come out of your water and sewer fund to pay cost. It was all wrapped into these certificates of obligation. If you turn with me to the next page, this is the tax exempt debt service. And as you can see there, it averages about $235,000 a year. It's very conservatively structured, so it's level from year to year. There's no increase in debt service or anything like that. Very plain vanilla. And then the last, uh, page there, the taxable debt service follows the exact same format. 20-year total payment, fixed rate or fixed interest rates. And that is approximately $590,000 from year to year. Again, no increase in debt service, uh, no long-term debt service beyond that 20 years or anything like that. So I was very happy with the sale results. Again, they were much better than what I had projected as far as interest rates, which leads to that lower interest rate and lower debt service. Uh, so that with that, I would recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Very thankful for any time you can get a lower interest rate than you were expecting. Any questions on this issue? Um, I'm thankful to be looking to do change at the animal shelter. I'm not thankful to be issuing this yet regarding the wastewater treatment plant. However, as I've said, setting up here about half six times, backed into a corner I never wanted to be in and the city of Levelland never wanted to be in. Um, this wasn't a contract that we could just negotiate that way sadly. Uh, city contracts have to be put out for bid and it came in much higher than what we were initially told. Uh, we were very upset about that. We had multiple meetings saying how upset we were about that. It was on the front page of the paper. Still very upset about it. Uh, however, I need the toilets to flush and these new businesses that are coming in on Highway 14 need their new toilets to flush. And if I need new housing in this community, we have to move forward. Not proud of it. Don't want to be here. It's never a place I wanted to be. Did everything we could. People beyond me, people way smarter than me to try to find a way out of this. But sadly, the project is costing more than was initially estimated and this is where we are. Uh, so as we've said, the only thing we can do to move forward is to finish the wastewater treatment plant. And as we have said, to aggressively market our community. And that's the attitude that we're taking is to figure out how to pay this annually, move forward, be aggressive, market our community, bring more people, bring more, uh, businesses to our town and make ourselves the preferred community in West, West Texas. So that's what I'm working very hard every single day to do.
Mayor, if I may make one, uh, final comment, one of the things you talked about is with the wastewater treatment plant costs going up, that is unfortunately something I see with all my clients. Um, so this is, um, uh, something that I'm doing for a number of them where they've had projects that were started and either A, the cost just rose for whatever reason, or B, they opened up, uh, bids and it was far exceeding, uh, what they originally had been told.
Well, most breaks for them.
Yeah, and I know it's no comfort to you, but I just thought I would point that out. So.
This version? Matthew, will we need to do a record vote for this?
Uh, no. And I'm, I'm proud that this came in at about a million, one point, yeah, under what we expected it to come in. Because we are aware, and like, like Mayor said, we, we have little choice but move forward with this. I'm, I make a motion that we authorize the issuance of this certificate of obligation for these projects.
Think you're gonna need to read this.
Where is it at?
Just move. We're gonna do these in two separate items. Related to the issuance of sale.
I move that we move forward with the certificate of obligation, uh, in the issuance of the sale of the City of Levelland, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Certificate of Obligation Series 2025A, including the adoption of the, this ordinance 1096 authorizing the issuance of such certificates of obligation.
Motion. Wait a second.
Okay.
Second by Max. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to read the caption of that.
Yep.
None opposed, without the motion carries. The next item is to consider all matters incident related to the issuance and sale of City of Levelland, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Certificates of Obligation taxable Series 2025B, including the adoption of ordinance 1097 authorizing the issue such certificates of obligation. And again, this is just the, um, taxable portion. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And just, we had to do these separately. One was non-taxable, one was taxable. And we did that on purpose because we got a lower rate on one.
Yes.
Compared to the others. That was strategic. Any questions on the 2025B ones or certificates of obligations, excuse me?
Yeah, I'm not gonna read that. I'm, I move that we move forward with the issuance and the sale of the City of Levelland, Texas Tax and Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Certificate of Obligation taxable Series 2025B, including the adoption of ordinance number 1097 authorizing the issuance of such certificates of obligation.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, without the motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, appreciate your help through this. Hope we don't see you for a very long time. I mean that very friendly. You're welcome to come to any meeting. We just don't want it to be for the, on these circumstances. Maybe say hi to us occasionally. Maybe you had it better than me.
Mayor, before you move off this item, um, I just want to publicly thank Jason Hughes with Hilltop Securities for his extreme patience, uh, advice and guidance as we tried to work through these, uh, various issues. When the wastewater plant first came up and we saw how much it was out of bounds, um, I immediately called Jason. He took every call, offered guidance, wisdom, everything we could think of to how we can navigate this, how we can move forward with it. Um, and he's just really been a great, uh, resource and even better friend to the city to help us, uh, work through this. So I just want to make sure we thank him for what he did because, uh, there are a lot of crazy emails and phone calls and thought processes of trying to get where we are today. So thank you for that.
Okay, item number three, consider and take necessary action to amend the Levelland Main Street bylaws. Um, it's pretty far down. What do you think? The whole thing?
Hi Kelly.
Hi, thank y'all for having us.
Yeah.
So this is a easy, simple fix, just kind of cleaning up our bylaws to state that we're gonna go by a calendar year that we'll elect officers and have new, um, board members step on in January and stop off in December. Just making this, um, you know, correct in our bylaws and we just need your approval for that.
I think that's much easier for volunteers to keep up mental wrap, head wrap around.
I'm hoping it is. Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am.
I move to approve the revisions to the Main Street Advisory Board bylaws as recommended by the Main Street Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate all that you do. Downtown looks very nice. Item number four is to consider and take necessary action to extend a fire service agreement with Hockley County to provide fire suppression in the county.
Mayor, members of the council, the current agreement we have with Hockley County expires September 30th, 2025. I met with Judge Baldridge and she and I both went over the agreement, talked about it and we didn't feel there were any changes needed. The only thing we did was recommend this be extended another two years to 2027. The county approved theirs today. We are recommending approval this evening.
I'm proud of this agreement. I remember when it was a contentious issue. It's not anymore. Relationships have been, uh, made stronger and our fire department's knocking it out of the park every single day and responding to calls within the city, out in the county, outside of the county, wherever they need to go to do what they need to do.
I think we approve the amendment which will extend the interlocal agreement, fire services between Hockley County and the City of Levelland.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, none opposed, motion carries. Item number five is to consider and take necessary action to award bids for the police department vehicle. Hi Chief.
The chief's trying to hide into the back wall.
Oh, I see.
No, I was slightly, but I, I thought that he was going to take the first and then I was going to move forward with the rest of it. And so.
You deserve all the praise. We're hard on it.
I am ready for this project to be over with. I'll be very honest. Good evening, everyone. Um, this has definitely been something that has consumed my life for about the last week and a half. And, uh, I am happy that we are hopefully coming to a close sooner rather than later. Um, as you know, we went out to bid for both a leasing company as well as, um, for a new fleet or a good majority of a new fleet for the department. Um, after thorough review of all the proposals, American National Leasing has ranked the highest as a leasing company. There were many, uh, factors that we considered in this, but basically the service, their experience and their transparency with pricing is what has, uh, ranked them the highest throughout the entire process. Um, I did call several references for all the companies or the majority of the companies. I apologize. One of them didn't provide references, so I didn't there. Um, everybody that I talked to for American leasing, uh, they said that they have dealt with them for nine, 10 years. They'd been through several leasing programs. The other companies that I spoke with, um, their references were like, well, we haven't got our cars yet. We're just now starting out with them. And I mean, they weren't, they couldn't really tell me much about their service they provided because they hadn't been with them for very long. Um, I do believe that they will be a great leasing partner from years to come. The comments that we had were they are small town with big town abilities. They will, um, they will be here when you need them, their phone call away. And that is very true. Every time I've picked up the phone and called them, I haven't been sent a voicemail. I don't care if it was 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, they were answering that phone. Um, so that is what my recommendation for, uh, leasing companies would be. And that does go off of a, uh, ranking scale of all of the companies. Um, in addition to that, on the vehicles, we went out to bid for 20 total vehicles. 19 of those for police vehicles and one of them for a Ford pickup for animal control. Um, I did hand deliver our, the RFP packets to all of our local dealerships. We did have two out of the three present bids. Unfortunately, the Ford dealership, the engines that they, uh, submitted for the proposal did not meet the requirements of what we were needing. Um, so they were, we didn't want to go down with our engine. We always want to have a high performing engine on that. Um, however, Ford did put in for the Ford pickup for animal control. Uh, they were the lowest and I think I'm excited to work with them locally. I think they'll be a great partnership. And so, uh, my recommendation on the Ford for the animal control pickup would be to, to go with, uh, Smith Auto Family. And then on the 19 Dodge Durangos, um, by reviewing all the bids for the 19 vehicles. Again, we had Chevy, um, the Tahos are really expensive and, um, and hard to get. That is correct. Um, and so after reviewing the bids and ranking those as well, um, Premier CDJR, I believe is what it is. So, so Premier Dodge out of La Mesa, um, is who the recommendation would be for, um, the 19 for admin CID vehicles and, uh, one K, K9 vehicle and then 14 patrol vehicles.
And the numbers came in considerably low from, from that particular dealership, correct? It was, it was well below the preferred local vendor, local vendor.
That is correct. For, for, yes.
I just want that said publicly. I appreciate you delivering this to all local dealerships because that really does matter and make a difference to them. And all they've ever told me is they want to be able to come to the table and present a bid.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing that. I just want it said that those bids came in less than the local bidder's incentive.
They did, yes.
That gives me peace for going outside the community. So it's important to note. And with this leasing company, this is the leasing company, I don't know who's gonna go into those details, but this is the leasing company that guarantees an interest rate that cannot change when the market changes.
That is correct. Yes. So they, um, do have a guaranteed interest rate now. If that rate does drop anytime during our process or anytime during our lease and we want to refinance, it is no cost to us. There's no refinance fees or anything like that. We have one completely free refinance through them. So we lock in a rate now, um, which we do have the rate that they have provided to us. And then, um, say six months from now or a year or two years from now, if that rate is lower, they will refinance them for us.
Very able rate terrifies me.
Yes. No, I absolutely agree with that. And that's, was very hard when we were doing the leasing comparisons because they are the only company that gave us a solid number. Everybody else was advertised lowest rate and that doesn't mean that's the rate that they're actually gonna bring to the table at the end.
And this rate is much lower than we were initially quoted.
It is.
And much more fair and reasonable.
So. Any other questions?
Ma'am, thank you for your work on this. It's exciting to see how this is gonna change our fleet.
Well, thank you guys for your support and I definitely appreciate it.
Chief didn't mention in support of the Levelland Lobos. We're going with red vehicles. Also supports our fire department. Maybe not. So, Mayor, this, a couple of things, um, if, when y'all consider the item on the leasing, um, I'm gonna ask you guys, if you want to move forward with this, is to, um, once you recommend the company that you want to go for, is to authorize, uh, the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Once, um, I get the clear from the city attorney and from the financial advisor, the reason being is it's with us just executing bonds, there's some things that they need to double check to make sure this lease doesn't run into anything because we're allowed a certain amount per year. And when we execute this lease, it puts us real close to that. We're also looking as, as we submitted the budget of what items we can put into internal financing. We just, we wanted to receive these bids to see where we're at. We'll, we're probably gonna pull the animal control and the four admins and pull them into internal financing. We've got about 1.2, 1.2 in internal financing that.
Like, because we can afford it in a better initial city.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's, that's part of it is we can afford it, better interest rates. We're paying ourselves. We've got funds there. So we're gonna be looking at that, um, but it's also just making sure because they've reviewed this lease, they also have to review every other lease that we have, our copier leases, everything. And so, um, if we waited on all that, some of these lease proposals would expire because some of them were dated till tomorrow. But, um, if we authorize to move forward, then it kind of locks it in as we work through these little nuances to move forward. So that's what I would ask if y'all move forward on it with a company, authorize me to execute necessary documents once, um, city attorney, because we will make sure they're comfortable with the lease as well, once they know exactly who we're going with. And then, uh, financial advisor and I'll even confer with you, Mayor, to make sure you're comfortable.
Once this is executed, when will the first batch of vehicles arrive or?
I said, once we order, can it be anywhere from 60 to 90 days? I would even, you know, maybe give 120 just because of all the craziness that's going on. But they've been real good at delivering pretty much within the window that they have set.
Just each year, will we be able to renegotiate with dealerships?
Once we have these vehicles in place, um, and this is another advantage of pulling in the administrative into internal financing. The one thing that we're also gonna have to work on is rotating our vehicles out so we don't have all 16 patrol vehicles coming up at the same time is how do we, we structure that? And we'll be working on that as well. And we'll advise y'all how we figure that out, um, because that, that will be important too. That we're rotating out about every three to five years is about the time span you want on police vehicles. So that, you know, we may have to look at some of these of coming right out at three and some may get pushed to a six year, uh, if we can, just so we spread that out. So there's a lot of little things, once y'all award this, uh, that we, we have to figure out internally to, to manage it correctly.
This is something we tried to do before. It didn't work out and we always thought it could, so.
Chief O'Brien has done a phenomenal job and spent hundreds and hundreds of hours on this just trying to understand everything and calling people and, and, uh, thinks she's training to be a finance director. Uh, she had a lot of fun working with these numbers, so, uh, but she did a really, really good job of answering uh, every question I had and others had. And I just really appreciate her work on this as well.
It's put together very simply and clear for us.
And Ms. Corley came in and played with spreadsheets for hours to input all this as well.
Well, it was clear and easy to understand. So thank you. Lot of moving parts. Any more questions on the leasing of vehicles?
I think it's a good move forward.
So these, uh, the five and six go together, but it's about the same, same thing?
Five? I didn't bring my agenda.
Five is the vehicles.
Yeah, five is the vehicles and six is the leasing.
And then purchase of financing?
Yes, sir.
Several votes.
So item five, if, um, it's on your screen, it's white. I was going, there's nothing on that screen. Is that the motion you want me to consider and take necessary action? Do we need to list the vehicles and?
Got it.
They need to be, Nicole wrote it all down.
Mayor, here's, here's, we, we need a motion that considers uh, authorization of, I think it's gonna be cleaner if we do this and, and multiply. The first motion would be to award the animal control, uh, vehicle to Smith Auto Family a 2025 Ford F-150 XL 4x4 at a price of $55,219.70 approximately.
Do you need that repeated?
2025 Ford F-150.
XL 4x4 at approximately $55,219.70.
I move that we award to Smith Auto Family the animal control vehicle of the 2025 Ford F-150 XL 4x4 for approximately $55,219.70 approximately.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. None opposed? With that, motion carries. Item number six is to consider and take necessary action to award bid for lease purchase.
Just a second.
Nineteen.
I was fixing to jump in.
Jump in.
Okay. Mayor, the next item staff is recommending is award the bid to pre- Premier CDJR out of La Mesa for the administrative vehicles. I believe there are four of them, which is a twenty twenty-six Dodge Durango at a cost of approximately fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine, twenty-five cents. Five eight nine four nine point two five. Yes, ma'am. If we can get all four for the fifty-eight, I'll be very happy.
Pay cash today.
Yes, take a check.
You want each one of those individually or you want to do all of those together?
Just do those for our award.
I move that we, we award Premier CDJR of La Mesa, the purchase for the admin uh vehicles. Four of those at twenty twenty-six Dodge Durangos for approximately fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
One hundred and forty-nine.
And twenty-five cents.
Five cents each.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, motion carries.
Mayor, the third recommendation is that we award the K nine vehicle to Premier CDJR out of La Mesa. Twenty twenty-six Dodge Durango at approximately seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. There's only one of them.
Move that we award to Premier CDJR out of La Mesa, the K nine vehicle at twenty twenty-six Dodge Durango for approximately seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? With that, motion carries.
Mayor, the final recommendation on police vehicles uh are fourteen twenty twenty-six Dodge Durangos be awarded to Premier CDJR out of La Mesa, Texas at approximately seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Mayor, I move that we award to Premier CDJ- CDJR out of La Mesa uh the bid for fourteen patrol vehicles, twenty twenty-six Dodge Durangos for approximately seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents each.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? With that, the motion carries.
We have to make a motion for the lease.
And now the lease will be
Item number six is to consider and take necessary action to award bid for lease purchase financing for police vehicles.
Questions?
Do we have the company name down?
No.
Whoever's reading the motion.
What is that company name?
American National Leasing. Staff recommends that the city council award the bid to American National Leasing um with a rate of five point nine three percent bank qualified. And authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents for this lease. After consultation with the city attorney, financial advisor and mayor.
I move that we award uh the, the leasing bid to American National Leasing uh with the rate of five point nine three percent bank qualified and authorize the city manager to execute those documents for the lease of these vehicles after consulting with the city attorney, the mayor and
Financial advisor.
Financial advisor.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor? That, and opposed, motion carries. Lease vehicle are coming. I think that's harder to get. Item number seven is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number ten ninety-five, setting utility rates, wastewater improvement fee and water improvement fee on a second reading.
Mayor and members of council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. Uh, the first reading was last week. The proposed ordinance makes several amendments to the existing code of ordinances, appendix A, fee schedule, article five of utility rated fees. The wastewater system improvement fee uh will be increased to twenty-eight dollars uh per the new wastewater treatment plant construction cost. And the water improvement fee will be increased from one dollar to five dollars per month due to increased treatment costs from the city of Lubbock. Staff is recommending uh approval of the second reading of ordinance number one zero nine five, setting utility rates. Uh, water improvement fee and wastewater improvement fee on a second reading. And this ordinance would be effective October one, twenty twenty-five. And ordinance ones, one zero nine five is an ordinance amending the city of Lubbock in Texas code of ordinances. Appendix A, fee schedule, article five point zero zero zero, utility related fees, section five point three entitled water service and five point four zero zero entitled wastewater service providing an effective date and providing a repea- repealer, providing a savings clause and providing for the publication. Whereas the city of Lubbock in pursuit to the constitutional law state of Texas, home rule city. Uh, the city is charged with the responsibility of establishing water and wastewater rates in order to ensure that services provided are maintained at an acceptable level and to service any water wastewater related debt that may be outstanding. And the council has previously established rates for water and wastewater services provided within the municipal limits of the city and outside the municipal limits of the city. And the city council has established their additional costs and stress on the water and wastewater equipment necessary to provide such services outside the municipal limits. And there's an increase in expenses associated with maintaining and operating these utilities and in order to keep the utilities in good working condition is become necessary to increase the rates charged for such service. Whereas the city council finds the following utility rate increases are reasonable and necessary for the continued proper operation and maintenance of the city's utility systems and in the best interest of the public health, safety and welfare. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Lubbock in Texas that the findings and recitals set forth above are hereby found to be true and correct. Uh, the code of ordinances nineteen ninety-seven, city of Lubbock in Texas, appendix A, fee schedule, article five point zero 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 is hereby amended by amending five point three zero zero as follows. Water service, um, five point three zero zero water service, A five water system improvement fee per unit is five dollars. F, water rates for irrigation sprinkler on a separate meter. Four uh water system improvement fee per unit is five dollars. Section three, the code of ordinances nineteen ninety-seven, city of Lubbock in appendix A, fee schedule, article five point zero zero zero. It's hereby amended by adding uh subsection five point four as follows. Uh wastewater service, the following rates shall be in effect for wastewater collected, treated and disposed of by the city to customers within their city limits, residential customers, wastewater system improvement fee per unit is twenty-eight dollars. Uh, two, commercial customers wastewater system improvement fee per unit is twenty-eight dollars. Wastewater rates outside the city um shall be twenty-eight dollars. Commercial customers wastewater system improvement fee per unit is twenty-eight dollars. Section four, effective date, this ordinance shall have effect for all utility bills issued for water service on or after October one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, all other terms and provisions of the code of ordinances, city of Lubbock in not in conflict here with and not hereby amended shall remain in full force and effect. Uh, publication, the city secretary of the city of Lubbock in is hereby authorized and directed to cause publication of this caption of the ordinance and is passed and approved the eighteenth day of August, twenty twenty-five. Passed and approved on the second reading, um, the twenty-fifth day of August, twenty twenty-five. One thing, I'm gonna ask the attorney if this needs to be clarified. When this says water system fee uh per unit and wastewater system fee per unit, uh should that say per month? I don't want someone to take that and say, I'm paying twenty-eight dollars for a year. Would that be better if we clarified that?
Yeah, let's go and clarify. I think you're probably okay, but no harm in being more clear.
Okay. We will add per month after each one of these, but staff recommends approval of this ordinance with this said correction.
I move to approve ordinance number ten ninety-five, setting utility rates, water improvement fee and water wastewater improvement fee with that change of per month on a second reading.
Motion in a second, all in favor? None opposed? With that, the motion carries. Um, item number eight, this discussion about the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Mayor and members of councils, uh, you're where we are in the final stages of adopting our budget last meeting, August eighteenth, we went over the budget letter that was um provided to each council member. We've also provided this online, also with our proposed budget is online. Um, and I believe the Lubbock in uh newspaper pretty much wrote this letter almost verbatim, which I appreciated front page right there for everyone to read. So I think um we have done a good job of, of getting the message out of what is occurring within our budget. Our budget is projected to be about twenty-six point five four million dollars. Um, as we stated earlier with the item on the, on the police fund, the one item, if you'll recall within the cover sheet of this, it has capital financing funds, which is our internal funds of zero. We will be adjusting that per um, the leasing tonight. We will also be adding in other items that we can fit into there. And then when you get the budget presented to you on September eighth, we will highlight those items that have been placed um, within this budget. But this document is available online. If someone uh wants a hard copy, I would encourage them as well to contact the city. We could email it or if they just want to come by and get one, we could make one for them as well. But we've had extensive uh meetings throughout the summer. I think Andrea has informed me this is the eleventh.
Oh, by the end of this, it'll be eleven.
So um, she's upset that Labor Day is next week and we don't get to meet next Monday, but uh, we'll work through it. Any questions on the budget, any concerns, any questions that may have come to you guys that you weren't able to clearly or comfortably answer that my staff can answer for you?
Myself. Any, anyone else? Any more questions regarding the budget?
No, I think you guys have done a thorough job on presenting this to us and to the public. I think, and I appreciate that a lot. This is, this was presented differently than we've had it that I've ever seen, you know, in years I've been on council. Now, this cover letter was outstanding. I really appreciate the detail that went into that. That was, that was really well received. And there's a lot in here and, and you guys have put a lot of thought into that. Uh, there's no, there's no areas that you're wasting money. That was, that's our biggest job is just to ensure that it's your job to, to find the places and, and, and make sure that we have the services. And, and you guys have done an outstanding job. And for that, I do appreciate you guys.
Thank you. The letter again, uh, I want to make sure Max Fisher, no relation to me. Uh, I couldn't have anybody that quite smart in my family, but uh Max came to us as a graduate student um, and took on every task that we asked him to do and worked very hard on this letter and took numerous drafts and redrafts and redrafts uh and presented it there. And it may get tweaked a little bit more before you guys get it. But I really appreciate his work uh and what he does uh for us during his time.
Max, I see that letter being a, a staple, a template for something that we'll use for years to come. I appreciate your work on that. And I echo what Michael said. That it presents the budget to the public there in a little snapshot and it is so clear and so transparent. And I'm thankful for that. It's, it has been presented in a different way this year in a way that I'm proud of that is um easier. Easier for um someone who hasn't been here for nine times, working on the budget. Any more discussion on item number eight, discussion on the budget? Good. We'll move on to number nine, city manager report, staff update, project update, staff citizen recognition, items of community interests. No action will be taken.
Mayor and council members, um, I place this on the dais for you. Uh, probably the biggest thing that we have coming up this week, uh, our new uh Lubbock in school superintendent has hit the ground running. There will be a reception on Thursday, August twenty-eighth from six thirty to seven thirty at the central office. Encourage you to please go by and welcome him to our community and offer your support uh as he tackles um, this job. Uh, every new job is always difficult and but Lubbock in has great schools, has great teachers, great staff, great parents. And uh, we need to show them that we're there to help him succeed because if he succeeds, then our community succeeds. So um, please make an effort to go by there. As we stated earlier, Monday, September first, we'll be closed for Labor Day, so we will not meet next Monday. Our next council meeting is September eighth. Um, in that meeting, we will uh consider a public hearing for the tax rate and we will also consider a public hearing for the FY twenty-six budget. Um, Tuesday, September second, at the amphitheater at Lobo Lake, we're going to have Lubbock in listens. Um, it's supposed to be a high that day of eighty-one, so we will chance it and see if it all works out. There's also a fifty percent chance of rain, but if we can have an outdoor meeting and make it rain, then we've, we've called some of the, that's a good thing. Um, September sixth, downtown Lubbock in, they're having a Rise Shine and Shop uh from ten AM to twelve PM. Yeah, it's a perfect way to start your day, support our local businesses. Uh, they have a complimentary brunch. Um, just, I think it'd be a great time to go downtown and see some of our local businesses and also just get to see your neighbors and friends. Um, SPAG annual meeting is Wednesday, September seventeenth. If you're interested in going, please let me know by September tenth or let Andrea know. Uh, Lubbock MPD um was advised today that they passed their T cole audit, which meant everything was good. Uh, it's great uh leadership that we have in there with uh Chief O'Brien uh and our captains of how well they're taking our, our department to that next level. Joint workshop with planning and zoning is on Tuesday, September ninth. And then leadership Lubbock in begins Tuesday, September thirtieth, and the applications are due September second. So we're asking uh city employees if um, to recommend some folks so that we can get those submitted in a timely basis. Ms. Corley, you have anything?
No, I, I just would love for you to point out that we're going to have two public hearings for budget and tax rate. And that was, says above and beyond what we're required to do.
End testing with cops was a huge success. From what I've heard, there were people there waiting for them to open and that didn't want them to end. So kudos, that took a lot of work, a lot of coordination. Sheriff's Department came. That's always a fantastic collaboration between departments. And thank you for making Lubbock in a fantastic place to live and giving us things to do. Proud of that.
Please? Nothing?
Captain, you got anything?
Oh, oh, there, there. If you want something to do, you could plan another one. Maybe full? I'm just kidding. Oh, clever.
I was at a local restaurant and heard, overheard folk at another table talking about it. So it was just really exciting listening to the community talk about it. So I think it's very, very well received.
And we'll get you more information on this, October second, which is a Thursday from three to four, it's some weird time. It's not going to be great for anybody. XL Energy is going to have their senior leadership here at the Mallet Center. Uh, so they can talk about some investments that they're going to be making within the South Plains. But also to hear from us about just different things and what's going on. Soon as we, we get the invitation and information for that, we will uh get that to you so you can be there.
Do we have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no other action with that. Thank you for coming and we are adjourned.